I'm calling this meeting of the Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Thank you, and on behalf of the city, we'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councilors want to make any changes to the agenda? There being no changes. We have two proclamations tonight. First, since May 11th, 2019, is Give Grandly, Give Local Day. The town will recognize this with a proclamation. And then next, since April 2019, is Fair Housing Month. The town will also recognize this with a proclamation. First, I'll present the Give Grandly, Give Local Day proclamation, which will be received by Carol Ann Fugalli, a member of the Board of the Grant County Community Foundation. Then I'll present the Fair Housing Month proclamation, which will be received by Jamie Whereas, the Town of Silver City is blessed by nonprofit organizations which provide invaluable services to our community. And whereas, Give Grandly, Give Local Day, May 11th, 2019, is the sixth community-wide given event hosted by the Grant County Community Foundation, online at www.grantcountycommunityfoundation.org and www.givgrandly.org. And whereas, there are 51 registered participants. And whereas, Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall grow the spirit of giving and raise as much money as possible for the nonprofits in Grant County area. And whereas, through the Grant County Community Foundation and its partner, the Southwest New Mexico Nonprofit Coalition, Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall inspire the public to support our nonprofit organizations on this one day, May the 11th, 2019. Therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City in Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim, May 11th, 2019, as the sixth ever Give Grandly, Give Local Day. And be it further proclaimed that for all citizens, it is the official day of providing financial support for all of the causes that continue to move our county forward. Congratulations, and would you like to say a few words?
Well, just on behalf of the Grant County Community Foundation and the Southwest New Mexico Nonprofit Coalition, we appreciate your support, and we hope you come out and support all the nonprofits in our area on May 11th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, whereas fair and equal housing is a right guaranteed to all Americans, and whereas the principle of fair and equal housing is not only a national law and policy, but a fundamental human entitlement, and whereas all citizens have the right to live where they choose within their financial means. And whereas, people must not be denied housing because of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or family status. And whereas, the Town of Silver City acknowledges the importance of assuring fair and equal treatment to all citizens. And whereas, the Town of Silver City will display a fair housing exhibit at the 2019 Housing Fair. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2019, as Fair Housing Month, and urge all citizens to participate in appropriate activities to commemorate this event. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll be looking forward to our booth at the housing fair this month. We encourage participation. We'll be getting that information out when we have dates and times set on our Facebook page and at our office at (534) 6348. Thank you.
Thank you. The next on the agenda is council comments. First is Councilor Connaught.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick little comment. I don't know if it's because it's spring, but it seems like driving in Silver City has become quite challenging for a lot of people. Since I live by the hospital, I tend to see a lot of emergency vehicles coming and going. And I don't know if people have forgotten the rules of the road when there are emergency vehicles, but I'm hoping that Chief Portillo can give us a little update, so just a reminder so people will hopefully remember that they need to get out of the way if they see an emergency vehicle with their light on or sirens. So keep with you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
He's gonna...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, just to touch on what Councilor Connaught was saying is we have been noticing a lot of motorists not yielding to emergency traffic. I'm asking the community, the public, to please yield to emergency traffic. When we're running lights and sirens, we need to get there as fast as possible and as safe as possible. We also want other motorists to be safe as well. A couple of things that we're noticing is motorists are just stopping in the middle of lanes, and we're taught to run emergency license sirens in the inside of the lane. When it stops, it makes it difficult for us because we're taught not to go on the right side, and that's because we don't want them to turn to the right side last minute and then have a motor vehicle collision occur. So again, yield to the right, pull off to the side of the road. Also, we've been noticing a lot of motorists pulling into the median. We also want the public to be aware not to pull into the median. So please, again, I'm asking the public that they can take it more time and yield to emergency traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Councilor Connaught, did you have any...
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments also. One of them is that we're going to be getting a lot of bicycle people here toward the Hila, and be sure to watch for them. And vice versa also, they have to watch for the people walking or driving. Another thing is that there have been too many people walking and texting, and I saw one fall down the other day. And you have to understand also that just because there is a crosswalk for people to be going from one side of the street to the other side of the street, you have to be aware also that there are vehicles, and sometimes we don't understand, sometimes we won't pay attention. So have that one second pause to make sure that you cross correctly and without hurting anybody. I had an incident today, and it was pretty scary. A lady wasn't paying attention, and I caught up a little bit, and she turned around, and anyway, she flipped me off, but it's okay. I have another comment to make, and I'm gonna talk about the schools and the hospital. And the schools have security guards, and the hospital has security guards. I believe that putting our police department in harm's way is not a good idea. I know there is a law that schools are gonna start to hire their own people with weapons. And I believe it's gonna be retired police officers, and I think this law takes effect in July. Now, getting back to the hospital, they have their own security people. And I truly believe that if they have their own security people, let them take care of bad situations. I don't like to see the police department, I'm talking personally, I don't like to see a police department be after taking care of something that could be taken by the security people from the hospital. And I understand that when something goes wrong, who are the first people that are gonna blame? They're gonna blame the police department, and it's not the police department. Anyway, be very careful on that toward the Hila. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ammon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been doing this pretty periodically, but I just want to acknowledge again that the town manager has worked to have some PR written by a journalist, Lisa Jimenez, and that the Daily Press has been publishing the wonderful articles written by her. There was a particularly, I think, useful one about the community development department that talked about the people there and what they do, the important but fairly invisible department. And then there was one out this last week on Public Works, and those were just really good and creative articles. So if you ever wonder, what do they do, the Daily Press articles are there for you to see. I'm going to mention a couple of things that happened during the legislature, win some, lose some. So one of the things is that the large tax bill, HB6, was somewhat passed, there were some line item vetoes, but one of the things that it will do is make a provision in a couple of years for internet sales to be taxed, and that means that some money will be coming to the town, we hope. I also want to say that there was an extension of the Indoor Clean Air Act that included vaping products, e-cigarettes, as being something that should not be done inside of buildings that are accessible to the public, that included governmental and non-governmental buildings. And I just want to also acknowledge, I know that there are a group of active Native Americans here in town who are really happy that HB 100 was passed and signed by the governor. That was the bill to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day in October. And so I just want to acknowledge, and I bet that they are really, really pleased. Give them a little Chautauqua heritage. Ah, ya. Ya oké. I also want to say that I think that I'm pretty happy with some of the capital outlay that came to the town, and I would really like to ask the town manager to speak about that either now or during staff reports, Mr. Mayor. Would that be okay?
Just do it during the reports.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Bettis.
Thank you, Mayor. So in our last meeting, I mentioned the issue with the FCC regulations that would force local governments to subsidize the deployment of 5G wireless infrastructure with no guarantee of improved service for residents. So I'd been asked what the resolution number is. It's House Resolution in DC for number 530. It is literally, if you took off the big title and everything, it's like a page, double-spaced long. It's very simple. What this bill, which is called Accelerating Wireless Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act of 2019, they seek to repeal recent harmful FCC regulations limiting the ability of local governments to regulate the deployment of 5G wireless infrastructure. So I want to make sure folks understand that we all want to ensure efficient, safe, and appropriate deployment of new broadband technology. But one of the things is that the FCC's regulations, which are just regulations, they're not encoded in law, they're a little different, sharply limit the type and amount of fees cities and states may charge for profit-generating use of public property. So that we're not supposed to, you know, the anti-donation sort of law, it would limit our ability to do that. Set shop clocks as low as 60 days for cities and states to conduct all necessary inspections and authorize proposals, and drastically limit non-fee requirements cities and states may institute. For like in our town, if you're gonna do something that impacts our sidewalks, our city streets, you actually have to put it back in the condition in which it was when you tore it up. That's one of the rules that we have, or one of the laws that we have. So one of the concerns with the National League of Cities is that the FCC allowed the industry to write these regulations without sufficient input from local leaders, and that's what they're seeking. They're seeking input from all of us. This is something that we've talked about since last year, because we managed to get a bill passed in the state that was favorable, allowing us to do certain things, the shop clock was a lot, shop clock was a lot longer. There is a number of provisions in the state bill, but this has been overridden by the FCC regulations. So what I want to say to the council and to the public is, they are requesting, I mean, it literally has gone nowhere right now, they're requesting additional sponsors. And I'm looking at it with the town clerk, there's a lot of sponsors from California, and they're from both sides of the House. But it would be nice if we could work together to maybe have the city and definitely the league, which I will be broaching the subject at the Board of Directors meeting, encourage our legislators in the House to please support this bill, to allow them to come back to the table and work with local municipalities. Because the big fear is, like I said before, is that our downtown could change irrevocably just by what this FCC has ruled. We're not, you know, giving license for any entity to come in and do whatever they wanted to on public property. So once again, it's House Resolution 530, it's only been introduced under seeking sponsors. It hasn't moved, it was introduced in January, on January 14th. So it's not, like I said, not moving, but maybe we can work together to do this. So as I said, there's an upcoming budget meeting that I will be chairing as the incoming president of the municipal league in May, and then there's the board meeting, which the president will chair. And I think that this is one of the major issues that we've got to bring forward as a municipal league to work a little bit closer with our legislators and to work a little closer with NLC. We did talk about this, but I just wanted to give out that information so people want to look and see where it's at. It's on congress.gov, and you put in HR530 to find out what it says. Really clean little bill. Did you want me to talk about?
If you want to. You.
Okay. So the Board of Directors and mayors were invited to be on a conference call with the governor this past Friday, and I just wanted to briefly talk about a few things that she wanted to talk with us about. One is that she wants to participate in as many New Mexico Municipal League events and board meetings. After the, on Municipal Day, when we went up for the board meeting, the governor did come in and join us for lunch and talked about how she wanted to work closely with municipalities and have her cabinet secretaries work closely with municipalities to change policies that they can change without legislation and to know right away about emerging issues. So she's encouraged us all to do that, and she wants to make sure that all municipalities and the mayors and the chiefs know that if there's an issue, and the town manager, they can call directly to the cabinet secretary. They don't have to go through the governor's office and say, this is a real problem. She discussed public safety and mentioned that she had just that morning had appointed Tim Johnson as the New Mexico State Police Chief, and that one of the things that she wanted him to do was to work with the other agencies so that we would stop, as she said, cannibalizing our trained officers. So trying to make sure that across the board, officers are getting paid, but she said, we've gotta stop this, you know, state police cannibalizes here, and another department will cannibalize from here, that we somehow have to work together to make sure that we have sufficient number of public safety officers, which is apparently what we're lacking right now across the state. She wants to work more closely with district attorneys to reduce crime, recidivism, overcrowding in the jails, and habitual offenders. That's nice that she wants that sort of working relationship with the Attorney General and with her office, with district attorneys. And then she talked about economic development and protecting municipal revenue streams, and that's what she tried to do with the current economic development, I mean, with what she's doing with economic development and her secretary for economic development. And then she mentioned, because she had just signed the capital outlay, she said it's anywhere and everywhere, and the focus was on rebuilding. And one of the areas was focused on rebuilding mental health reimbursement, mental health across the state and reimbursement rates for mental health. Bill Philgenetic, who's the executive director, thanked her for signing HB6. He didn't mention the big veto that's in there, which is Section 7. And what that, aside from everything else, that's the only one that really impacts us out of the other veto that she had done. And that basically means that we are still under the rubric that if a taxpayer realizes that they are actually not in the city limits, but they're in the county, and they've been paying taxes, and that it's based on an annual 20%, and I mean, it'd be like, we wouldn't get our grocery receipts tax for I don't even know how long. I think for the city of Albuquerque to meet the annual thing, it was, what was the figure? Like 50-something, 60 billion, a million dollars? So we were trying to change it because it had been passed, and it was not included in the Rocket Docket because Senator Luvell had retired. So what we were trying to do is go back to what it was originally, was a monthly average. So and the implication in the letter that she sent was that they would work to ensure that municipalities would still be able to function, but you know, unfortunately, that whole section was vetoed in House Bill 6. And then she, Bill thanked her for House Bill 479, which basically rescinds, actually, what it does is it's called de earmarks local option grocery receipt tax, not just for us, but also for counties. We all get lumped together, there are still ones that the voters have to vote on, but we don't have to say, oh, we can only use, you know, we've used all of our infrastructure grocery receipt earmarks, and now we don't have to, they're all gonna be de earmarked. I don't know how long that's gonna take, but it gives a sort of an amount with, and it didn't. What I was looking at didn't, it's really kind of hard to read these bills, but it definitely sets aside what the council can do versus any grocery receipts tax that still need to have a referendum, which is a voter referendum. So those are two good things for municipalities. HB6, that most of it is really great, it's also good for the hospitals. We're gonna get, for every dollar, they get $4 back from the federal government, I think. And I see James nodding his head. So I think that House Bill 6 did a good thing, and yes, on tobacco products, there's an increase in costs. Yeah. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Bettis. Are there any other comments from the council? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to mention that this past weekend, there was a phone call to my daughter through dispatch, and there was a lady there that was complaining about Tapia being closed. And I talked to Mr. Brown about it, and Mr. Brown told me to mention that it would be feasible for people that are gonna use the Tapia to let your London know, correct? And that way, they can make arrangements for it to be open. And I thank you for closing it because those bridges weren't made for automobiles. And I thank you for closing it. But anyway, that's what I had to mention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? I just have a couple quick ones. In my March, Monday with the mayor, some of the items that were brought up to me, too, specifically, one was a person who lives on 32nd Street on the West End where there's no pavement, reported that the two speed limit signs there, I think 15 mile an hour speed limit signs, had been taken or stolen. And then another citizen reported that on the corner of 32nd and Thrawn Street, she was concerned because parents bringing their children out to the cars were in a blind spot coming around that corner. And I want to thank Police Chief Portillo and Mr. Brown and Mr. James for addressing this very quickly. I got a call from the person on 32nd Street thanking us for doing that. Also, at my Monday with the mayor this week, someone came in and said, I want to talk about the police department. I said, oh. And the citizen said, I parked my truck in front of my business the other day, and I locked it, but I left a little space above the window, and I just went in there for a little, went into my business for a little while, came back out, and my purse was gone. And she said, I called the police, and she said, it was amazing what a good experience that turned out to be. All the police officers were courteous, they were helpful, they did an investigation, they even found her purse, with most of the stuff that was in it still there under one of the bridges. So Chief, Mr. Brown, Mr. Marshall, thank you all for your role in that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You just reminded me of two officer poodles that I have to give.
Okay.
The public talked to me about.
Come on.
So thank you for doing that. I have to bring it up on, like, I had sent myself a message. So the first one is from Walgreens, who, the manager of Walgreens, Derek, and he wanted to thank Corporal Steven Delgado for his professionalism. He said every time that they've had an issue, he's been extremely professional, and he wanted to let everyone know that he really appreciates how helpful and professional he's been. And the second one, I cannot name the bank, but one of the banks in town wanted to thank Officer Tony Flores, and I'm not sure if he's an officer or a sergeant or officer, for his quick response to someone that was trying to do something in the bank. And they knew exactly who it was, and they went after him and got it. So I just want to say that both of these businesses wanted to mention how professional these men are, how professional all the officers they've had, or sergeants or whoever they've had contact with have been, and they appreciate the work they do to keep their businesses safe, the citizens safe, and they wanted me to mention that. So thank you, Mayor, for saying something.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Ray?
One more time. I forgot to mention, I talked to Mr. Penio, that one of your drivers from the garbage, he made a little kid very, very happy at 6th Street. And I don't know that person's name, but that little kid was very, very happy. He led him in the garbage truck, and he showed him how to move all the controls, and every time he goes by, he's always like that. So thank that person for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so the next item is approval of the minutes of the March 26, 2019 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ammon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to approve.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town and Silver City of March 26, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilwoman Benson?
Thank you, Mayor. I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public input. See that three people have signed up. If you signed up to talk about the annexation issue, if you would hold that until we get to that particular agenda item. So I guess we really only have one person that hasn't reported yet, and that's Mr.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and of course, city staff, should press the button. Does that make a difference? Pull the speakers out. But anyways, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, thank you very much again for the opportunity to speak up. And several things to bring up. Number one, certainly like to thank everybody here that participated up in Santa Fe during the legislature. You all did an excellent, excellent job of letting the northern part of the state know that we exist out here. And of course, our big animal that we need to conquer is Highway 180. And you all did an excellent job on that. Ran back to the great results. What was stolen from us, hopefully, we'll get back. And we all spent plenty of time on that highway, of course. We all know the need for that. It's a bipartisan issue, and they have, everybody did a great job. From the local, you all, City Council, County Commission, representatives, and of course, now our lieutenant governor. So thank you very much on that. And secondly, I'd like to reaffirm exactly what Councilor Conno and the chief just brought up. Every time I'm on the roadways, and I wish we could send the population back to driving school. Just less than a week ago, sitting on Silver Heights, getting ready to turn up to Swan, an ambulance was coming, so everybody just held back except for a couple of individuals right in front of the ambulance. Luckily, the young lady driving the ambulance had the wherewithal to know what was going to happen. She stopped and waited for those individuals to clear the intersection. Had they been flying through there and wound up getting hit, they would have slammed it to us. So yeah, it's definitely an issue out there. How do you educate this population? Another place I usually have a lot of problems with is Pine Street, Swan. People seem to think those four-way stops there are yield signs. And I've had confrontations with people there because they figure they have the right way no matter what. And we all have a simple rule, your first four, the one on the right, you go. But unfortunately, some maybe public service announcements on what the basic rules of the road are, or especially emergency vehicles, they have priority, or pedestrians, as we know. And another issue I'd like to bring up, we all know, but hopefully not beating a dead horse, but we've dealt with the ROV issue before, just like to let you all know, as far as those of us that are interested in that particular type of vehicle, we haven't let the issue die. We certainly would like to resurrect it, and hopefully within the parameters to where all the city departments feel that it fulfills legalities, regulations, and DOT requirements to where we can all participate and enjoy what is right around the corner, which is the summertime. As we know, tourism nowadays, used to be the old days, everybody had a Harley or off-road motorcycle, or three-wheelers. Nowadays, it's a cyclist. And hopefully, we can resurrect that in such a way where we can keep everybody happy. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is reports, and I know Mr. Brown has a report as requested by Councilor Ammon Smith.
Uh, here, I actually have three reports. One is, I just wanted to make a comment on those signs on 32nd Street. Peter made sure that the guys went out and put those speed limit signs up that day that we talked, and they ran over them that day. So they had to go put them back up. And so, you know, people just have no disregard for, for anything sometimes. But I want to tell them, thank you for getting everything put up really quick.
Yes, thank you very much, Peter.
Uh, number two is the budget. It's budget season. We've been working on the budget. I've finished all of the revenue projections for the next year, and we're going to start putting in the expenditure side personnel, which is the largest as far as personnel services for the general water, sewer, and sanitation funds. So I will start bringing information to you at the next council meeting on that. And the last one is the capital outlay. We did receive four capital outlay awards. One was a $200,000 award for Main Street that goes through the town for town property, for the Main Street Plaza, between the $200,000 allocation and $65,000, around $65,000 award that was awarded by Freeport-Mackinac. Main Street will be able to do Phase Two of the Main Street Plaza and have a little bit of funds remaining to work on Phase Three and final completion of that plaza. The second one was $300,000 for sidewalks. We currently have $125,000 from last year. We just completed a design of approximately, how many blocks, Peter?
About eight or nine blocks.
About eight or nine blocks on, in the downtown, around Market Street and Board, in that area, in back behind, behind Board. We've got $125,000 from last year, and we got $300,000 this year for construction. And that project is approximately about $406,000, so we should have all the money to complete that project. We got $265,000 for Scott Park. I am going to be working this year to get the remaining funds so that we can complete the concession stand and bathroom down at Scott Park. And then we got $275,000 for Little Walnut. That money's going to be used for right-of-way acquisitions so we can complete that acquisition and continue working on a federal lands access grant with joint application with the county so we can complete Little Walnut up to the Little Walnut Campgrounds. And so if, if everything works out, really works out well, we should be able to spend all three, all four of those allocations by the end of this next fiscal year. So I do want to thank all of our representatives, our senator, and state government officials for those allocations because we're going to be busy this next year. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the council? Councilman Smith?
Thank you so much for giving our report, Mr. Brown. And I just want to say that the Little Walnut extension is a really good for completion. It's a really good example of finally, the county and the town working very well together. And included in that will be bicycle lanes, or some of it, not all.
We're looking at bicycle and sidewalk curbed, drainage is an important issue on Little Walnut. We have a lot of problems. So those are some of the major things that we want to, of course, bike lanes, and it's going to be just like the first two phases of Little Walnut, which have bike lanes, sidewalks.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've already noticed a couple of backpackers going up Little Walnut.
I saw a dozen.
And they're headed for the Continental By Trail.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Brown? Okay. Next on the agenda is new business, which is the new business A item, is the approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the 24th Annual Blues Fest on May 24 through 26, 2019, at the 2000 Block of Pope Street, Silver City, with alcohol service on May 24 from 5:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., on May 25 from noon to 9:30, and from May 26 from noon to 5:30 p.m. Liquor license holder information, one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67085, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. And two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number 63013, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. I believe Mr. Kevin Lechner, the director of the MRAK, is going to make this presentation.
So you want to introduce yourself? Yeah, my name is Darrell Evans. I'm representing Little Toad Creek. So we're very excited to have Little Toad be the beer garden provider. They are also now the presenting sponsor for the Blues Festival, so they kicked in some extra sponsorship money, and we're glad to have them support the Blues Festival. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer.
Go quick. Councilor Conno?
So the scheduled events says that on Saturday, it's going to end at nine, and on Sunday, it's going to be at five, but you want us to alcohol a half an hour later on both of those days after it's closed?
It's to allow us time for people who have already bought alcohol to finish their drinks and then leave.
Okay, but on Friday, you have it ending at, sales ending at 10 o'clock, and the event ends at 10:30, so.
I believe we're going to get everybody out of there by 10 on Friday night because we all want to go. So if that's a problem, we can adjust either one of those times, but on Saturday, we usually have a trouble, or sorry, Friday, Sunday, we have trouble getting everybody out. Everybody wants to hang out, nobody wants to.
Well, the hanging out isn't the issue, the selling is the issue.
So we do stop sales at five, and then we give people half an hour or two. So believe, once our permit is up, all alcohol has to be off tables, out of the hands, and so we give a little bit of extra time there Sunday.
Can you say anything, Councilor Conno? Councilwoman Benson?
Okay, so now I'm confused because alcohol services begins on Friday at five and ends at 10:30 p.m., and the event ends at 11:00. And then Saturday and Sunday, it's noon is when it begins, and it ends at 9:30 p.m. on Saturday, and it ends at 5:30 p.m. on Sunday, not five. So we're going in.
I might have misunderstood your question. So we stop alcohol sales 30 minutes before we have to get everybody out of the area.
Okay, so.
Councilor Conno?
Okay, so if you're selling, if you're stopping alcohol sales at 5:30, and the event ends at five, why aren't you starting ending them at five, and then you have till 5:30 to get them out?
Those might, those might be backwards. So I've been with this for the last two years, and we've done it. And we always stop alcohol sales 30 minutes before the event is supposed to end to give people who have just purchased alcohol time to finish their drink.
Okay, so my issue is with the letter that, that Mr. Lechner sent, because it says the music in golf park is from 12:15 to nine on Saturday, and from 12:15 to five on Sunday. So if that's the case, then serving alcohol that much later is not necessary. You could stop serving it at five and get it out of there at five, or nine, get them out of there at 9:30. Instead of keeping them there till 10 now, if they've got half an hour extra to drink it.
Are you talking about on Friday?
I'm talking about Saturday and Sunday are my issues. It makes sense on Friday because you're done selling it, and they still have half an hour to leave. But then on Sunday, the event has ended, and you're still going to sell it an extra half an hour plus, then now they have a half an hour to leave, so it's an extra hour that they're going to be there.
I think, I think what you're saying, Darrell, is that they stop selling at 5 o'clock, and they have until 5:30 to get everything off the table.
Okay, if that's the case, then we need to adjust the application because it's not correct.
I think, well, I think the application says 5:30 because it gives them that half hour to get everything off.
But the way you've written it in the application, it says they can be selling alcohol until 5:30, which is half an hour after the event ends. So we need to change it to five and nine instead of 5:30 and nine thirty.
And I think this is what we've done every year since we've.
Okay, well, I'm not concerned about last year, I'm concerned about this year. This application does not, the times are weird. So can we change it?
Yes, we can change it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Benson?
I, I think what Councilor Conno's pointing out is there's a difference between your letter and the application.
Yeah.
That the letter, Mr. Lechner states the scheduled events, but that is not reflected accurately in the application that Little Toad Creek submitted. So the question is coming down to, on Saturday and Sunday, what is the actual ending time of the event? Because you have a different ending time on the application of the event, which extends service a half hour longer than what you've stated is the scheduled events, which is ends at nine and it ends at five in your letter. I mean, I think what we're trying to do is make sure that there's an application, yet your letter is, there's a difference in times. So I think what she's asking, that's in her district, is what is the right ending time for the event? Therefore, when is the right time for the alcohol service then?
Sure. I would defer to the application because that's what Little Toad has put together. And there's the one who is serving the alcohol, so.
Councilwoman Conno?
So you're going to have an event that's going to take place, and there's going to be music in the park until 9:30 and 5:30 now instead of nine and five?
Well, adjust the letter, yeah. We can adjust the letter to that. So, I mean, it doesn't end at nine o'clock specifically at any point in time is when the band is done. So we try to end it between, around nine o'clock, it's a generalization.
Mrs. Conno, what do we need to do to clear up this issue?
The letter is contradicted, so the letter doesn't exist anymore. Right? The evidence that's being presented to you now is the evidence that you're going to make your decision on, not the letter. And if the application needs to be amended, they can amend it right now. Or if they don't want to amend it, then they just go ahead and vote on what they're proposing. It seems like you always try to work things out with the applicant, so I would encourage ignore the letter and let representations be made right now as to when the events end and when the alcohol will end, and base, make sure the application conforms to what the testimony is, and then vote on that. And don't let the letter get in your way.
Okay, let's make the, let's make the revision.
I would, I would defer to the application.
So Saturday, the music stops at nine, event ends at 9:30, so we stop serving at nine. Right? Sunday, I believe those were the two days, Saturday and Sunday. So music ends at five, we stop serving at five, 5:30, we have everybody out of the beer garden.
I think we're going to need you to rewrite that letter and give it to the city.
I think the letter is more informational than it is.
Why don't you just say, "I withdraw the letter"?
I'd like to withdraw the letter.
Okay.
So I mean, so as you just said, I will change from 9:30 to nine and 5:30 to five, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you repeat that? I'm going to lie about my.
Well, on Saturday, it'll change from 9:30 to nine, and on Sunday, it'll change from 5:30 to five. And then when I read it, I'll get it right.
Okay.
And you're okay with that?
Any other comments? Any other comments?
So, okay, so Councilor Conno's got to read out, but the, the two applications that are in here have to be amended. They have to amend them before they leave to reflect what she's going to state. I mean, so she's got the originals, but they would have to be amended. And that would be working with the clerk to do that.
Yeah, we need a written record of that for the files.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Any questions or comments from the general public? Do I hear a motion?
Ms. Ray?
Councilwoman Conno?
I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications for the 24th Annual Blues Fest on May 24 through 26, 2019, at the 1200 Block of Pope Street, Silver City, with alcohol service on May 24 from 5:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., on May 25 from noon to 9:00 p.m., and on May 26 from noon to 5:00 o'clock p.m. Liquor license holder information, Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67085, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City. Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67085, 203 South Mel Road, Silver City, New Mexico, and Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number 63013, 203 South Mel Road, Silver City, New Mexico, and that's pending the amendment to the application at the end of this meeting.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Ms. Mayor.
Councilor Ray?
Councilman Asbridge.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. The next item is 11B, the approval slash disapproval of a joint powers agreement for consolidated public safety answering point, parentheses, PSAP. And I think Mr. Marshall's going to make this presentation?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, what you have before you is a joint powers agreement which constitutes the Grand County Regional Dispatch Authority. You saw this very same agreement, I believe, in June of 2018. It was prepared and finalized in March and sent out for distribution and approval, and we have spent the last year negotiating with one party and failed. So that, the dispatch board, we looked at the agreement again. We approved the agreement you have before you, and I'll briefly go through the differences. Simply said, any reference to Hila Regional Medical Center is removed, and the board goes from seven to six, the quorum goes from four to three, and the, the payment distribution had Hila Regional only 10%, since they're removed, that 10% was dispersed relative to the percentages that were in the agreement for all the other parties, raising the town and Silver City's commitment from 35 to 38%. Grand County's from 35 to 38, and everybody else went from five to six, and that makes up to 10%. We do still hope that with cooperation from Hila Regional through a customer relationship, that the net difference will still be, that our commitment, our actual allocation will only be at the 35% level. But to ensure that the Department of Finance Administration at the state will approve the agreement, we have to demonstrate that we're whole on the front end. So with that, I will stand for questions.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Madison?
So I guess, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, well, GRMC can be billed or called.
That would be the customer relationship that the board has voted on already.
Okay. And then even if this is approved today by, by the council, and it's approved by all the other parties, is there an opportunity for them to sometime come back to the table and wish to join it as it currently stands and go back to their 10%?
I sent them an email two weeks ago explaining that at this point in time, after a year of effort in sitting at the table where they declined any further concerns in March, that we were moving on and that the offer to partnership was being, had expired. However, they may make application at any point that they feel that they're prepared to do so, and the dispatch board will consider the merits of the application in considering allowing them to join.
Okay, thank you. Those are the two I have.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of a joint powers agreement for consolidated public safety answering point, PSAP.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Ms. Mayor.
Councilman Lamont Smith?
I also have a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Anna.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Right.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is 11C, is the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-11, a resolution clarifying and expressing town of Silver City policy of neither seeking nor desiring the annexation of developed property to the town. Mr. Brown?
James is going to go ahead and start the presentation.
Mayor and council, you have, first of all, I want to make it a point to note that we brought back up pretty much all the department heads that provide critical services are here tonight to answer questions that I may not have, and definitely the detail. So don't let me hang up here, guys. You've been staring at this slide for a while, and excuse me, but I lost my glasses in my mood. So this is basically the first page of the resolution that you're considering that generates this presentation, 2019-11. So I wanted to go through and list a few of the reasons that you might want to consider passing this resolution, and the town has very specific development standards, the town has limited resources, which you're all well aware of, and I'm going to go through as we go through this and explain some of this in more depth. Some of the development, the developed areas bordering the town do not meet the town's standards. They never have, they've never been required to because they're out in the county, and we don't regulate that area. The annexation of developed land versus undeveloped land creates unique and costly burden on the town. The areas that were annexed historically that continue to have significant and unmet needs to bring the area and services up to town standards. We have many areas in town that we're still trying to bring necessary services to. The topography of Silver City and surrounding areas create unique difficulties in development, and more importantly, modifying areas that were not developed to town standards originally, and the town is, has a responsibility to address the needs and promise services within the town prior to consideration of accepting additional areas that may be fiscally burdensome. So as I defined, undeveloped, undeveloped land is basically, it's not occupied by residential or business, and developed land has obviously been occupied. I promise not to read this entire slide to you. This is some really important sections of our land use code. 6.3.3 E, I believe, is the section on annexation. We do have a process in place that if we were to desire it, or somebody was to desire it of the town, that they have a process to make application to the town and do this in a harmonious manner. The, we have obviously, and I mentioned on the previous slide, the development standards. The purpose of the Town of Silver City Land Use Code, and I think it's really, really critical that you read that purpose, and, and what that truly means to, to the town as you try to develop a growth pattern as well as making sure that we're protecting our current residents and our current obligations. The 1.3.2, and this is one that, that has been counted into my head for many, many years, and it's, it's really maintaining the town's character and making sure that we're harmonious with the character and not having major sprawl, having the proper land use. The promote good planning, all of these land use code policies are put out there to maintain a, good planning practices and sustainable growth, if there, if there is to be. The prevent the adverse impacts of development on the availability of water, waste, wastewater disposal, water, poly, roads, and transportation erosion, flood lines, steep slopes in critical areas of town. When you're looking at developed land versus undeveloped land, you can address these issues and you can consider their impacts on the, the town as it exists prior to an annexation. You can address those on the forefront. We've all looked at the water contracts that we have for selling out to, the water to other customers, and we have reserves that we maintain, and that can be done on the front of a, of a development as well. There's multiple town codes that truly impact the lives and the activities that people do on their town property that are much, much different in the county. You have animal care standards, the two animal limit, the no single point tethering. If you go drive around just outside of the town, you'll find many, many animals that are single point tethered, and we've recently done that. The fire prevention suppression codes establish fire breaks, setbacks, ingress and egress, fire flows, and this all relates to our ISO rating, and our ISO rating impacts every single individual that purchases homeowners insurance in the town. The utilities, infrastructure, areas bordering the town where private lines are a quarter mile from the residence, we have certain areas where people can't even see their meter from their house. These are what I, I like to phrase underdeveloped areas. Historically, there was some decisions made that are disadvantageous to both the town as well as the customer, and we've had some irate customers coming in because they're, they developed water leaks and they never even knew it, and their water bills are outrageous because they, they don't even know where their water line goes, whose property it crosses, and we don't allow that within the town. The street standards, obviously drainage, and due to the topography of this town, drainage is critical. The smoke is the condition. We, we struggle with that, we all know it, we all drive around town, the potholes, the runoff, the drainage. We spend significant portions of our, our budget trying to keep and maintain our streets from, from shrinking rug funds. The surface material, what is, what was the street originally made out of? Did we approve it? The gutters, sidewalks, and a dedicated 50-foot right away in residential areas. The town has the annexation process in place for both town initiated as well as property owner initiated. It basically goes for staff consideration, and then to Planning and Zoning Commission, and then to the council for final consideration. The annexation in the land use code has some similarities to state statute, which, i.e. it must be contiguous and similar in character. The territory to be annexed shall provide a positive long-term economic benefit to the town as determined by fiscal impact analysis. That's in the towns code, and I, I don't think I need to speak too much on it, but the fiscal impact analysis, I mean, that's the only way we're really going to know what burden we accept or decline if we do an analysis, and I'm going to reference some other analysis that, that would have to be done on developed areas versus undeveloped. The territory to be annexed may include developed or proposed to be developed pursuant to a comprehensive mixed land use plan. The, and I know I have a typo in here somewhere, and I'm not sure if it's on this slide, the, so I've got a sentence that's apparently chopped off. The territory to be annexed upon build-out shall not diminish the level of services identified by the town. Our resources are currently stretched. The police department has pretty much greater than three mile from north to south to cover limited resources. The fire department, our ISO rating is based off of the existing town limits. Streets, utilities, they all have very limited resources that we have to be very, very conscientious of whenever we go to extending their, our level of service. As well as whenever we do a development and it goes through the, the development process, the applicant agrees, if it's a developed area and being annexed into the town, the applicant would agree to bring it up to town standards. If it's an undeveloped area, it's much easier to build that in on the front end and make sure that we're, we're up to town standards and that the, the citizens are served. So what happens to the residents?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes, sir.
A quick question. On the last item, it says applicant has agreed to remedy any conditions of the property which are designated by the town that is adversely affecting health, safety, or general welfare, or that constitutes a nuisance or a hazard to the public. Has the applicant made any agreements to that?
This is not in response to an application, this is in response to a creation and affirmation of a policy of the council.
Oh, okay. Councilor Madison?
Can you just inform us about, since this is, yeah, this is policy, what would the impact be to town residents and businesses on their insurance rating and insurance costs on their home? If an area that was not up to town standards was annexed, what, I mean, that would impact the overall ISO rating and could conceivably, I believe, the chief can answer this, it would increase the cost of insurance. Is this not correct?
Mayor, council, the ISO rating is, is typically referred to as a property protection class, and that is what your insurance company bases your payments on. ISO is based on the caliber of the fire department, it's based on the adequacy of the water supply and the effectiveness of essentially dispatch, our ability to get a lawn. An annexation of this sort, the water supply is inadequate for fire suppression means in a, in a long-term, and what this could do is change the city's ISO classification, which is currently a four, to a five or possibly a six, which would raise insurance rates for every resident of the city, both for business use and personal use. I can't quote you an exact percentage because they vary based on insurance provider, but with mine, a two classification jump from a four to a six is almost a 20% increase on my homeowner's insurance.
Councilor Madison?
Thank you. That, that's basically why, I guess I wanted to get at in terms of the reason why we have this, that this is something that's coming before us in terms of reaffirming the policy is that, that any annexation that doesn't meet town standards, especially with, you know, fire protection and being able to respond to calls, is definitely going to impact all of the residents and businesses in Silver City and in general could increase our ISO rating that would then in turn cause higher insurance rates across the town.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mayor, council, as these things come forward and you look at different areas, you speak to your constituents, you also have to think of actually what the impact is on the residents. While the state doesn't necessarily do that, I think it's becoming of this town and part of our history that we actually look at everything that we do impacts somebody. The residents are suddenly mandated to come into compliance with certain rules and regulations that are typically more stringent than the county's rules and regulations, i.e. animals, trash, vegetation. The cost may shift to residents, especially in multi-occupancy lots, trailer parks, any other multi-occupancy lot, whether there be any kind of grouping, where you may pay $15 for tipping in the county, $15 per quarter, $5 a month. That cost, once you become a town resident, is then tied to your utility account. So you're going from $5, which is probably varied in your rent, to now you're being, it's $32 to that will be tied to your utility service that the town provides. Many of these areas have been neglected for decades and will typically need to be brought up to town standards, and the residents of the town have, and rightfully so, have a higher expectation when you live inside the town, like they're going to have curb gutter sidewalk, water sewer, better police, fire protection, and the town would, and this would be required to find the resources to make those improvements. When you really get down to the human side and you're looking at a family that's got three dogs or two dogs and a cat, and now all of a sudden they found themselves unwittingly a resident of the town, are they going to choose which animal has to lead the family? And that's very, very personal to many families. So what happens to the town? Without a fiscal analysis showing positive increases to revenues, the town services are, police services are diluted, the fire services are diluted, the street services are diluted, sanitation services are diluted, existing issues like drainage become a sales burden, the code enforcement is diluted, utility services may be diluted. Here's a list of one section of town that has the call for service by the law enforcement on Seven Streets, just outside of town. There'd be another 400 called for our police department. I'm going to give you a couple of examples of areas. The area off of Mountain View Road up behind the hotel, there is rural nature with low to moderate density, and moderate is by lot. The roadways in many areas are not dedicated to the public and not up to town standards. The water infrastructure is best described as spaghetti lungs. I discussed that a little bit ago. There's group meters that are sometimes up to a quarter mile from the point of use. There's very steep slopes, poor ingress and egress, for design for turnarounds, if at all. The lack of liquid waste, the undetermined compliance with the town codes because we don't control that area, and we don't receive complaints on that area because they're not all to our standards. So we're not absolutely positive what that volume would be, or the burden on the residents to all of a sudden try to be councilman.
Councilor?
So, just to add on, just to make example, my question is this, is what would be, if we even know it's an average cost, of what it would be to separate grouped meters, place them near, because the residents or the developer would have to bear that burden because we don't do grouped meters in the town. We separated all of them, to my knowledge, that's group water meters.
Well, there's areas over there where the group is four or five meters, boom, 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 right next to each other, and the water lines all go out from there. So it's not one meter serving multiple homes.
Okay.
It's multiple meters off in a field.
So, but that would still, in order to comply with town standards, it would have to be placed near the home?
I actually just purchased a home that had one of these situations. My meter was 800 feet from the back of the home on a different street in front of somebody else's house, and it cost me about $700 to move it to the front of my house.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a very high cost to finish a lot of these underdeveloped areas to town standards, and we've been striving for 20 years to do that with certain areas that are within the town currently. Minimal opportunity for fiscal resources for the town to address additional burdens. There's not going to be any big retail stores out on Mountain View Road that are going to create a revenue source to help support this neighborhood, which means that the burden then falls back on the general fund, it falls back on the council at some level. The mobile home park off of Ridge Road, commonly referred to as the ridges. The areas of trailer park with moderate density, the roadways are not dedicated to public and no curb gutter drainage. The water fund would lose about $70,000 a year. The sanitation fund would gain about $80,000 from the residents. The single property owner would save about $12,000 on landfill and property tax to increase, and property tax to increase to about $13,000. Mr. Brown, did you want to elaborate on that?
Yes, basically what he's saying there is that the waters, because of the, the water isn't quite double, but the higher rates for out-of-town residents, once they became in-town residents, we would lose approximately about 70. Normally, if they went through the town process, we would have a fiscal impact analysis, and we would have some good numbers, but because it was circumvented, we had to come up with our own numbers, and these are approximate, the best guess estimates that we could come up with in the timeframe that we had. So we would lose about $70,000 in water revenue. Remember, the water sewer fund is separate from the sanitation fund because they're enterprise funds, they are standalone funds that are supposed to take care of themselves. So that means $75,000 of the burden that's going to be spread amongst the resident, the remaining residents of the town of Silver City. The sanitation fund, we would generate about an additional $80,000 a year, but that would be to provide additional sanitation services, collection out there, which we do, which we don't do now, which we would have to do. And then the tipping fees and everything that we, we would start charging them rather than the, that would be the resident's responsibility rather than the property owner's responsibility. On the second part of that, the $12,000 savings would be approximately the landfill fees that they would, are paying to the county right now. The single property owner is paying to the county is about $12,000 a year for their quarterly $5 a month landfill fee. That would be shipped, he would lose that. He wouldn't have to pay that anymore because the property, the occupant would be responsible to pay that in the future. But he would have a property tax increase of approximately $13,000. So he would have a wash. It wouldn't affect him at all. I mean, basically, all the cost burden would be shifted to the renter and to the town.
So additionally, very similar to the Mountain View Road area, there's very steep slopes, poorly designed streets, poor turnaround access, fire trucks take a lot of room to turn, and we've struggled over the years, other than some of these areas getting trucked into and out of, whether it is due to the turnarounds or just the steep slopes and poor water, makes for an interesting adventure for some of our staff. The town access to the county, if you look at this area, that, that single owner actually carries on to the bottom third of Pheasant Street, not the top third. And so we would, we would basically have the city limits maybe on a neighbor-to-neighbor fence line. So one neighbor would get city services and one wouldn't. That would be a lonely learning curve for all the staff and for dispatches. And additionally, we would have to go through the county to access some of those areas. We have done a drive-through of this area and have identified multiple code violation issues if town standards were applied, as well as animal issues, that they very well may be in compliance with county standards, they would not be in town. Once again, just like the Mountain View Road area, the, there's a very high cost to finish the development to the town standards, and where the Mountain View Road area would be applied over multiple, multiple owners, this area is a single owner.
And with that, I would like to have Chief Portillo come and talk about some of the issues he perceives.
I think maybe I stepped in a little bit early.
A little bit. Let me finish this one.
Okay, go ahead.
So I also, I just want to give you another picture of the undeveloped land. Obviously, with undeveloped land, we're not going to have any existing code violations unless there's an eligible dump on the property. There is no residence, resident expectations that currently exist. The, there's no cost shifting from owners to tenants and/or the town. The ability for the town to apply standards with the developer and minimize the later confusion, that's pretty much what a land use code and all the development standards, page after page of them is for, is to make sure that we develop the property to a certain standard that the town residents can expect. The ability for the town to develop services in a planned manner, if we're going to develop or expand police-fire utilities, we have to look at all these analyses. The fiscal, here, that's the very next sentence, fiscal, transportation, water sewer, public safety, potential revenue analysis to be completed with development would allow us to have a planned growth scenario in undeveloped land, very importantly. All results in an ability, all results in an ability to ensure the town can provide the services to the newly annexed territory and the subsequent development of the territory and not negatively impact the citizens that we're currently committed to. And then I'll let you read a little history there, but we have great burdens that the town residents and expect of the town in providing services from water sewer, which are some of the most important, to emergency services. And I spoke a little bit about that in a little paragraph I wrote on the history and Chief Portillo.
Excuse me. We need to take a short break. Do I hear a motion to take a short break?
Mr. Mayor, I'm in for a short break.
Is there a second?
Please, in a second.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll have a short break of about 10 minutes.
Or less, or less.
Or less, so stand by. I call a meeting back to order, and we'll resume with Chief Portillo and Mr. Marshall.
Mayor, council, to touch again on the code enforcement, animal control, of course, we have one animal control officer, one code enforcement officer. We're already working within the town, of course, to get everybody into compliance and work with the public. Annexing is going to really stretch our abilities to fulfill those needs of the annex further. There are a lot of issues that Mr. Marshall already addressed, and that's going to take up a lot of time for animal control, for code enforcement, to work on a particular area to get that up to par, up to code. Right now, I believe we have that ability. Also, it comes down to an officer safety issue. We have right now a minimum of three officers that we have on the street. This would probably impact us because I would probably have to make a mandatory to have four officers on the street to cover that area, which in turn would create more overtime, also create an impact to officers to where they wouldn't have the ability to take any time off. The distance is a problem. If we have officers up in the business district up north and one gets dispatched all the way across town, it's going to be hard for a backup officer to get there, so I believe it's going to be an officer safety issue, along with, also with response times. So we'd have to change a little bit as far as the way, how many officers we have on the street, which I really think will have a huge impact. That's all. Yeah, I addressed the animal control again, it's going to really stretch our abilities to address those issues.
Councilor?
I also think there'd be some potential problems with the fact that if you have to pass through county to get what would be now town, that those people in the county would expect our officers to stop and to deal with issues on their property. They wouldn't understand that there is a hard line there because it appears in some of these areas, we've got to crap. We have to cross, you would have to cross through county to get to what would now be part of the town if it was annexed.
That's correct. And also, if we were there and it's, the county's right next to it, if there was a emergency situation, we would have to, we'd probably be attacked anyways.
Right.
So.
And, sorry, chief, and is that also, I mean, there is a, they used to call them compacts. I don't know what they call them anymore, when, because, because currently, under municipal code, you're only really, unless you have, you don't really have jurisdiction outside of the area in the county unless there is some sort of agreement between the county and the municipality, which I believe that there is. But that's one of the things that we've talked about in the New Mexico Municipally Policy Committees, and the one that I'm on, because of this issue with, then anything that happens where you're assisting with that, because you would be required to assist with that, that ultimately the cost increases to the department, to the town, and to the residents because you would have to go through all the legal ramifications of being present at things that may not be within the town. I mean, it's a complicated sort of thing that I think most people understand. When I've had some, some residents in town saying, I don't understand why, you know, know, our office, the service EPD, you know, they're not, they're not patrolling 180, you know, past the town borders. Well, that's because we kind of focus on the town borders.
Correct.
So I, I think that there's going to be, potentially in any annexation that could occur, there's going to be that issue if you have, if you have to cross through county to get to what would now be considered city. And the cost would increase exponentially to the residents of the town and put a place of burden on the police department, if I'm not correct. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Marshall?
Ask our Chief Lambert if he can elaborate.
Mayor, members of the council, there's a couple of other points I'd like to discuss beyond the ISO rating. The water supply in this area is, is very dependent upon the single water line running across Ridge Road. If we, as a fire department, draw water from any of the existing hydrants that are downhill from Ridge Road on any of these proposed streets, we have, we have approximately three to six minutes of water before we have to shut down operations. We stand a very good chance of cavitating the line, which is drawing enough water out of that line that can't be replaced, and it will collapse and break the lines or damage our vehicles. Those were some of the fire inadequacies on water supply that I was worried about. I want you to consider the 2011 Quail Ridge fire. It crossed the road approximately two miles from this area into the Silver Acres subdivision. We lost fifty-six structures in that fire total. Those fifty-six structures had wide-open space around them. In this proposed annexation area, these properties are very close together. They don't have property boundaries like we typically mandate inside city limits. To make that situation worse, the eroded ravines in between each one of these streets are extremely full of debris and brush. So we could have the same fire scenario that we had on Quail Ridge going through Silver Acres, but with the proximity of these structures, I think our chance of losing seventy percent of greater of these structures in that instance is very likely. ISO rating, I, I talked about it a little bit before. It also looks at the distance from the nearest fire station for response. And right now, our ISO rating is judged on the farthest distance of city limits on Ridge Road, which is roughly the state's up storage area. That's 1.8 miles from Station One on Hudson Street. The end of this annexation is roughly 3.8 miles from the same station. ISO is very dependent upon response times and distance to the nearest station. If you exceed a five-mile limit, you immediately go to an ISO protection class of 10. Going from 1.8 miles to 3.5 miles without building another fire station, we're doing some extreme improvements on the water supply and fire protection in that area most definitely would change our department's ISO rating. Not only does that affect the citizens of the town's insurance rates, both in businesses and residents, it affects the funding that we receive as a fire department from the state. So the lack, or the loss of several ISO points would take about a third of my operating budget out of what we receive from the state, and, and I would, I can't operate without that. I would rely on general funds at that point, which, which creates an additional burden to the city and its general funds.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Marshall?
Mayor, Council, I just, I want to make a point that while it's obvious that we've heard there is an application before the Municipal Boundary Commission, this is a, what we're proposing to the council is a general policy that the same points, or many of the points that the fire chief mentioned and have been mentioned on Ridge Road apply to Mountain View Road. And if any of you have been on the council for more than a week, you've had requests to annex areas of Indian Hills. So there's, there's many, many areas, and we're trying to address and prepare the council and the citizens as, give some level of security that the policy of the town is to ensure that there is no harm done to the town by annexation of anywhere around the town. Obviously, the petition that was filed with Municipal Boundary Commission has been on everybody's mind, so I, I don't want to ignore that. But this truly is a reiteration and restatement, reaffirmation of the council's policy and educational for anybody that may be considering it, if any one of the multiple people in Indian Hills were to come forth. They know what the town is looking for and what the town needs after this proceeding. And I would like to ask Robert Esquida, our utilities director, to speak.
I have one question.
Councilor President.
Thank you. I just have one question, I don't know if the chief or if you would answer this, Mr. Marshall, because I seem to remember during the time that I served with you as mayor, that the then-chief came forward to request upgrades to fire hydrants to ensure that the ISO rating stayed, stayed lower. And if, I'm just, I mean, this is a long time ago. I don't know if, if the Chief Lambert knows about that, that this was quite some time ago that we had to upgrade particular hydrant setting within the town's boundaries to ensure that people would, that we would have an ISO rating that would be maintained, when we went out for it.
I believe Mr. Esquida could probably address that.
Okay.
And, and you, you're all well aware of the, the recent projects that we've had to do in town.
Right.
To make sure that we have commercial fire flows for some commercial development. It was right in the middle of town.
Including, yeah, in District One.
And Mr. Esquida has been the one responsible for making that up.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, you know, with this, with, with the proposed annexation, where there's already development, similar to this one, where there's already development, where there's already water, there's already sewer, we already maintain the water lines, we already maintain the sewer rings, these developments were done years ago. In, in, in this particular area, the improvements were done dating back to 1994, 95 timeframe. In comparison now, anytime there's any new development, what we ask the developer to do is to perform a water impact analysis and a sewer impact analysis. And what that does, that provides us insight to see if there's any, what the minimum size of lines necessary, what type of improvements are needed within the development, but to also see if there's any negative impacts to the existing infrastructure, whether it be the sewer or water lines, to see if there's any required improvements to the existing infrastructure that lead to the development that so it won't negatively impact existing residents. Same thing on the, on the sewer collection system, so we don't surcharge any sewer lines, cause any backups or, or cause a negative impacts to the collection system. So when you look at these type of annexations, it's like, like James was saying, it's definitely easier and more proactive when you can develop, when you can look at undeveloped land where you can have the planned growth, the planned development, and, and plan for those future expansion or continued expansion of the system. In this case, where, where there's already planned development, one of the things, if, we'll need to go back and look at, okay, are there any areas that we need to make improvements? Because like I said, this develop, you know, some of these areas were developed years ago where the standards aren't the same as now. So we would need to go back and look and see, okay, as Milo touched on fire flows, okay, how, or what wouldn't be necessary to mitigate some of these issues? And what costs would that bear on the town to make these type of improvements?
Mayor, I also want to give a specific example of what Robert's talking about, about working together. We did it with the county when they built the jail. With the study that was, that was, they did, we, they had to increase the capacity of the water line that led out to the jail specifically so they could have the fire flows for their proposed construction. And this is what Robert's talking about. We worked with them for a year, year and a half.
Yes.
In fact, we even paid for the difference between what they specifically needed to, to get the proper fire flows. We, we paid for increased sizing for future development. And so we've been working with, with, this is a perfect example of a partnership where we worked with an entity to be proactive, to plan for future development in the area. And so from the city limits, I believe?
From Lance Drive.
Lance Drive to, to the, to the jail. That water line was installed, increased size, so they had the proper fire flows and everything for the long term.
Uh-huh. Any questions or comments? Mr. Marshall?
I'd like to ask Mr. Our public works director, he's, he has some very specific concerns about contiguous property.
Mayor, Council, in looking at this area, what I see is many concerns. There's a lot of stuff out there that, that doesn't meet town standards, and to bring them up to town standards would cost quite a bit of money. As you guys know, we do projects throughout town, and they're, they're very costly. We just finished a, a project on College Avenue, and basically we get about five to six blocks, and the improvements that the town paid for were over a million dollars, or close to a million dollars. So a lot of these improvements that we're looking at through this annexation would be very costly to the town. One of the biggest concerns that I have would be the drainage issues along the ridges. Basically, it's very steep, and during inclement weather, especially mid-July when we get those really hard rains, there is no flood control. So basically, water goes everywhere. One of the biggest concerns that I would have is getting some drainage issues resolved there as quickly as possible to resolve some of these drainage issues, and that would probably be at a minimum doing fairly better, which in itself would be very costly to us because we're looking at a number of streets and, you know, basically combining all the lanes and stuff would be a couple of miles. So to me, it, it looks like the impacts to the town would be quite a bit of money just to get these places up to, to standards as far as flood control. I think it's one of the, the most critical things. We've even had some issues off the ridges in the past because we've had to, through the environment department, we've had to do some work because at the bottom of the ridges is our old landfill. And what we've had to do is based on the amount of waterfall and, and what comes off of these and the destructiveness, we've also had to do some work ourselves along the edges of our, our landfill to protect it from it. So we've already incurred some costs through this. So my anticipation is that the cost would be quite large for this, and, you know, that, that would be one of my, my, just to get started on, on the issues. But the, you know, the standards aren't met by the roads. You know, there is no dry pad. Dry pads are very important also to drainage. We'd have to build those also. Without dry pad, we'd have water going into people's yards, which at this point, that's all we see through there. It's so steep there that we probably couldn't meet a lot of the ADA standards as far as sidewalks and things of that nature. There is ways that we could meet that, but it would be very, or even more costly because we'd have to build a lot of retaining walls and structures of that nature in order to be able to put this stuff. So, and just looking at a lot of the issues out there, I do see a lot of impacts to public works. At this point, we do have a lot of needs within the town that I haven't been able to meet, and this would just add on to what, what we already have.
Mayor, I wanted to add on to what Mr. President's talking about. We all know Silver City because of the top, topography. Our drainage issues are immense all over town. We talked about, Mayor, this last year, all the drainage issues we've had off of the Market Street corridor, the death we had off of the drainage from, on, off of PH Street. We talked about a drainage study that we're working on off of the Market Street area from Highway 180 down to Bullard Street. We've started it. We've got the purchase order in place. It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just to do the study. That doesn't include any work to help mitigate some of the drainage off of just that one area. And so we've got to do that, and because we've got an old community, there was, I mean, the big ditch occurred because of poor drainage development. There was no drainage development that was taken into account. Most of the projects, infrastructure projects that we, we work on specifically to, to streets probably are increased by about forty to fifty percent cost of construction because of all the added drainage that we have to include because of the topography of, of the town. You know, you can go to Deming and get twice the construction that you can get here because they don't have to plan for drainage like we do everywhere. And so, you know, you've got Market, you've got Mountain View. I mean, you can name any part of town that we have these same problems. To add on a new area in town, anywhere in town, to just compound our, our issues is, is just putting us farther and farther behind the eight ball.
Councilor President.
So, you know, it's just a general comment that, you know, all of our town staff are talking about the impact to town, and I want to bring it back to the fact that it's GRT, grocery sales tax, it's property tax, it's, you know, all of that that our citizens are paying for, that it's, it's residents and the people that come and shop at town that are paying for any improvement. So when we say the town, we're talking about our current residents. We're talking about the people that spend money here. And I think it's really important to understand that every time we say the town, we're getting those monies from all of us that are sitting up here, all of you out there that are town residents who come in and spend money at businesses. So I, I think it's just one of those things to bring it back around. We always say the town as, you know, you know, we are the town, but we're also getting that money from everyone that lives within it or that, like I said, spends money within it. And I just want to bring it back to, which I think Mr. Brown's going to talk about, which is the fact that, you know, 1.8 million dollars of whole harmless that we're going to lose and no way to fully recover from that loss. And even if we impose new taxes, which are the whole harmless GRT, we're still going to be at a great loss, and the burden will be passed down even more to our citizens because every time we get a grant for anything, we have, we come up with a match. And that's coming from the jail fund or from the specific fund that we've attached it to, or the GRT increments that we gave it to. Remember, I've talked about the fact that they're going to make it so that those GRT increments come into one big pot rather than have it solely for infrastructure or whatever. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up, that, I mean, I think that, that all the department heads are doing a really good job. I just want to bring it back to the fact that we're also talking about our residents in town and the taxes that they pay. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Penney, comments? Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. Last and certainly not least, I want to give Jamie Enbeck.
Thank you.
An opportunity to, to speak on the development standards for the town, as well as giving an opportunity to know that she can be understood. you an opportunity to know that she can be understood if she read the newspaper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think the earlier presenters have given you a great understanding of what my job is. We accept the applications and then we work with the department heads and a developer to make sure that all of those town standards that are in the land use code are met. We make sure that the police standards are met. So, this is a really great overview of what our department does and that's why we accept the applications and do the pre-development conferences. We get the engineering documents for the other department heads to review. If, if that doesn't happen, you'll never have a completed picture to look at when it comes to you to make a decision. You'll, you'll have to remand your decision. You won't have information. The other department heads won't have the information to make the decisions. So, the land use code is quite specific about what's required in applications and as you can see from everyone speaking tonight, that's why. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Moshen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I, thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, we, we try not to be so lengthy on these presentations, but I, I think this is important as far as trying to maintain the sustainability of the town. And the, the town staff has taken great looks at, at many areas that are contiguous to the town in coming up with this recommendation and affirmation of our policy. And I, and I think the land use code and the criteria that are in that, the historic willingness of the town to consider applications and go to great lengths to negotiate acceptable solutions for all parties is, is a good sign for the public and the town, which is the residents, that all of these issues, all of these factors that you have to consider are, truly impact people and the resources are limited and we have to make sure that if we're going to add additional burdens on those resources, that we're able to take care of the residents of the town as they exist today. And that's what we've really tried to paint a picture. There's many areas that, that meet some of the criteria for annexation around the town as far as character. There's just not many areas that meet town standards as far as infrastructure and creates, could potentially create a great financial burden as well as dilution of resources. And we would recommend that you approve this resolution.
Thank you for that very thorough presentation. I've only been mayor for three years, but I, I can't tell you how many phone calls I get during the rainy season about flooding in various parts of our community and the roads being torn up by these waters running down the street. And I've met with Mr. Brown and Mr. Penney a number of times and our response is always, be patient, we're going to address these issues as we can, as we get the money. And I think our vote's going to send a message to the community members. I strongly recommend that we send the message that we're going to help you when we can, but we're not going to dilute our resources in any annexation. That's my personal take on that. Does the council have any other comments or questions for Mr. Moshen?
I have no comments.
Counselor Ammon Smith?
That is that this resolution in front of us really reaffirms policies that are embedded in the land use code that are reflected in various town plans, the comprehensive plan. And so, what this resolution is doing is saying this is how the town has decided to do business in order to protect its character and in order to assure that we are prudent with our funds and that we do what is possible, given the historical nature and the ongoing nature of the town. So, this is, it's an affirmation. And I just want to thank everyone for all of the work. It's kind of brought to head by a case example, but really, these policies, town policies, have been active for some time. Am I correct?
Uh huh.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Haveray?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question or a comment to Mr. Moshen. If we approve this resolution here, would it be forced upon us to undertake this, this annexation?
Your question is better answered by me. I, I had a few things to say, so I'll include an answer to your question with my two cents. Normally, an annexation occurs when there's an agreement. When there's an agreement with the property owners and the municipality. There has, there's a law, there's been interpretation, courts have spoken to this, because the usual problem is not having an annexation forced upon you. The usual problem is a, a voracious municipality trying to expand its borders, trying to gain influence or power, political or economic. That's the, so, most of the laws have been drafted to prevent the voracious municipality from trying to expand itself. So, it says, well, if you're going to expand, you've got to show that you can provide the services to the place that you're expanding to. Now, two of this, there's three methods of annexation. One is when the city leads the role. Says, you know, we believe that we can provide services. This is an adjoining area that's contiguous to the town, so there won't be a gap of another jurisdiction in the middle. That is harmonious with the town. It's mutually beneficial. The town will gain financial resources. The owners of the property will gain some financial benefit. So, we all agree that we want to do it, but the state and its legislation says, well, you've also got to show that you can provide services. You just, we're not just going to let you expand and expand, taking more territory, taking more territory without showing that you can provide the services to the people. There's a second method, which is through arbitration, which is also inspired by a petition to the city, but where the city is agreeing to it. But, there's an issue of certain kinds of services. How much services shall be provided? What are the conditions of admission for the property owners that want to be annexed? So, there's two out of the three are where the city, the municipality wants the annexation, but they have to go through certain hoops to prove that they can provide the services. There's a third method. It's where the property owner does not come to the city and try and deal with the city looking for agreement. It tries to oppose its will through municipal boundary commission, which is a group of political appointees, hopefully qualified, that the governor appoints. We don't know who the municipal boundary commissioners are at this moment, but they're appointed and they're, according to the law, they have maintained in the past, up until about 2002, that they could force an annexation onto a municipality that didn't want it. And the court said, no, you cannot run roughshod over a municipality that opposes an annexation, that it would be undemocratic, that it would be unreasonable, and that the municipal boundary commission is obligated to listen to the town. Prior to 2002, in this important decision that involved the city of Albuquerque, where a developer or property owner or group of property owners tried to force the city of Albuquerque to annex certain territory. And the boundary commission made a comment that we don't have to listen to the city's wishes. And the court said, yes, you do. And if they have reasonable objection, whether economic, whether physical, whether due to planning, whether the, the town's own concept of how it should be developed, that they, that the town deserves high difference, high deference, meaning you need to respect the position of the town. Now, in the old days, the people that wanted to force annexation on a city would go to the boundary commission, thinking that they could roughshod over the municipality. That circumstance doesn't exist anymore. So, when you say can a municipal boundary commission force an annexation, probably unless there are reasonable reasons expressed by the municipality why such an annexation would be detrimental to the town, to its principles, to its residents, to its financial ability, to its uniqueness. And those, we're all aware that there was an annexation notice published in the newspaper. So, we're aware of a unique circumstance where a property owner is using the boundary commission to force an annexation on the town. By the presentation that was made tonight, you can see that there are reasonable opposition to any annexation, not just by this particular property owner. The municipal code, the land use code already has a procedure designed for almost everything that's in this resolution. The problem is, is that the municipal code only deals with cooperative annexation. It deals with annexation whether it's a petition or where there's arbitration and it says, this is the criteria that we shall apply. So, using the municipal boundary commission in the hope of circumventing the municipal code, which provides for a criteria and for a process for annexation, perhaps was meant to shut out the town having a voice. Well, the Court of Appeal says the town has a voice. The voice was expressed tonight to you why there should be no annexations because this is not a wealthy town. This is not a town that can go out and hire five more police officers, five more firefighters, three more animal control, two more code enforcement officers. Diluting the service to everybody in the community is not a positive. So, the presentation that was made to you tonight is the best expression of what the land use code already says, what the comprehensive plan already says, what the practices of the town have always been or have been for the last 25 years. And the, if you're going to in any annexation case, whether it comes through the municipal boundary commission or through arbitration or any other way, what you do tonight will be the voice of the council because you're not going to be testifying in these cases. So, your voice now is to express, this is the policy that we all agree upon, that we're not annexing any property unless it meets the infrastructure needs, it does not dilute the services to the present residences, it's economically affordable and it's intelligent to do it and there's mutual benefit. And unless you can make those findings, plus the other findings that are required in the criteria in the, the land use code, that you're going to hold any annexation to those standards. And that's what you're saying now. You're enunciating as clear as you possibly can and you have the entire staff of the town coming before you to give you that support. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Moshen? Mitch, you've been here for a long time waiting for a turn to speak to this, so it's your turn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. I don't really have all that much to say. My name is Mitch Hellman. I'm a resident of Silver City. I've been there like 16 years. First off, I want to say I am truly impressed by the job that has been done tonight to explain it, to cover all the bases, to make a case, to basically make a determination as to whether or not this is going to be how the town is going to proceed going forward. And I do sincerely hope that you do approve this resolution because I think we are seeing possibly the most clear-cut example we could ever see as to why we should not annex a portion of the land around Silver City. There are a couple of things, though, that I think bear mentioning. One, in this specific instance, I don't think it's entirely clear or should be made clear at least to the public as to, okay, yes, there are things that are going to need to be done in order to bring the area up to code. But, I don't think there's a clear enough explanation as to who it is who's going to pay for that. And, you know, it seems to me that the town obviously can't afford to do so. The town is having enough trouble trying to go ahead and take care of some of the things that need to be done for the sections of town that are sections of town, not places that want to be annexed. But, I think it needs to be said as to whether or not, in this current situation, whether or not the landowner who's brought all this to bear has made any motion that in the event of certain things not being in town standards, whether or not he plans on footing any portion of the bill for it. That's an important aspect that needs to be considered with this. My guess is probably he doesn't because I don't know that that landlord would be going through the motions that he's going through now, what basically amounts to an end run around the town, or so he thinks. I don't think that would be happening if this individual was ready to deal with the town in good faith and be able to provide some of what that area needs, among other things. Some of that would have been done before this ever came up if there was really that much genuine interest on the part of the landowner in improving the property.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you very much. You can return to your seat. Mr. Scavron, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I mentioned one in my earlier comments, but I got carried away with other subjects. After, I've discussed this with the finance director, who is the town manager. Any annexation of any property, developed property around, contiguous to the town, would be unaffordable for the town to make those infrastructure upgrades. And I brought to his attention, and he was aware of it, but I went into more detail, this 56-page document is a recap of state statute and there's something called an improvement district, where the cost of all the improvements required to bring a property up to town standards would be borne by the owner or owners of the property and become an assessment, a tax assessment on the owners. If there was a hundred, a hundred property owners, then the assessment would be divided by the hundred and there would be arguments about whether, who is getting the more of the benefit. So, the first, there's, there would be required an engineer's estimate of all the costs to bring the property up to town standards. And then, that would be an assessment against the property owners or owner.
And then that would be an assessment against the property owners or owner. And that's, the, the first statement says that wherever, whenever a governing body determines that the creation of an improvement district is necessary for the public, safety, health, and welfare, the governing body may create an improvement district for any owner of a combination of projects authorized by the chapter. That includes roads, drainage, streets, grading. So that determination would be made by the town's engineer, and the cost, there'd be a cost estimate, and that would be placed on the owner seeking the aid. Whether it's out, and these improvement districts can be created outside of town limits with the permission of the county. So if the health, safety, and welfare of the town was being threatened, they, the town, with the county's permission, could create an improvement district, and the owners thereof would be taxed. And it would be a lien upon the property, and that lien could be foreclosed.
Thank you, Mrs. Scarborough. I'd like to call for a motion. Counselor Cunnell?
Thank you, Mayor. I have moved to approve Resolution Number 2911, a resolution clarifying and expressing town Silver City policy, neither seeking or desiring the annexation of developed properties to the town.
Thank you. Second? Counselor Wright?
Mr. Marshall, thank you, Ms. Wright. I second that, is it?
Any discussion? Counselor President?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to state that over the weekend I was out doing some yard work, and I had a number of folks come by, stop, pop the horn, want to talk about this. And they all opposed, and they wanted to support what the town is doing in affirming its policies. So, and that they do oppose any annexation that doesn't meet some sort of mutual benefit, and that can be something that we can altogether be able to essentially afford. So I would just say that I didn't hear anyone pro in the eight hours outside doing work, and also from phone calls that I received. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mobile call please ahead.
Counselor Cunnell?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Ainsmith?
Aye.
Counselor Bediston?
Aye.
Motion carries. Announce it. The next item, 11D, is the approval slash disapproval of disposal of fixed assets of the library. Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mayor, counsel. In closed, you have a list of fixed assets that the library would like to dispose of. And normally, we would bring a large list to you. We would wait till we had a large amount of fixed assets to bring you to dispose of. But because we've got a new purchasing agent, I wanted to get her feet wet and have her work through the process, so, so we just looked at the library. So you've got the list, and we would like to dispose of it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ainsmith?
Mayor, I have moved to approve of the disposal of the list of the following fixed items, assets from the library. Reception chair, red, one dark blue desk, single pedestal.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Bediston?
I second the motion, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. The next item, 11E, is the appointment of counselors to committees, board, and group positions. This is the current list of assignments. The cemetery board has an advisory role. The current representative is Guadalupe Canno. Under the municipal library community advisory group is Counselor Linda Ainsmith, as ex officio. And that was also true for the cemetery board. The Grand County Regional Dispatch Authority Board is Mayor Ladner. Alternative, alternate is Counselor Jose Ray. Under the area transportation authority board is Counselor Linda Ainsmith. Alternate is Mayor Ladner. Under the municipal museum community advisory group is Counselor, Counselor Bediston, as ex officio. In the Southwest Solid Waste Authority Board is Mayor Ladner with alternate Counselor Jose Ray. Under the Grand County Water Commission is Mayor Ladner. Under the Silver City Mayor's Main Street Project is Mayor Ladner, ex officio. Under the Southwest, under the regional four, chief elected officials of New Mexico Workforce Connection Board, Counselor Guadalupe Canno with alternate Mayor Ladner. The Grand County Community Health Council advisory, no, no counsel is on that one. That's Mr. Brown. Under the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governor, Governments is, as an alternate, Counselor Bediston. These are the assignments that I would like to make unless there are any objections. Counselor Cunnell?
You skipped that. First Development Board, which is the other board that goes with...
Right. I skipped that because that shows is vacant.
Those boards go together?
Aye.
I can ask that. The region four chief elected officials appoint the members to the Southwest.
Okay.
Area workforce.
So are you okay with that, Counselor Cunnell?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any objections to these assignments?
Mr.?
Okay, these individuals are hereby appointed. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ainsmith? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We are hereby adjourned.